Evansburg Area School District Committee of the Whole, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. August.
Thank you, Ms. Everly. We have three updates tonight. First from athletics and Ms. Fawness.
Hello. Okay, so I'm just going to give a very brief fall sports update. This is what I usually start off the committee meetings giving a current season, upcoming season, and then any extras for the committee. So first, fall sports, varsity football and high school golf began on August the 4th. Varsity football has 53 participants on their team this fall. Their first scrimmage is on Saturday, August 16th at Milton Hershey. High school golf has 13 participants and their first match of the season is this Wednesday, August 13th at Greencastle. Then we moved on to the start of the season today for high school girls soccer. They have 33 participants and their first scrimmage is away on Tuesday, the 19th at Littlestown. High school boys soccer has 54 participants and their first scrimmage is home this coming Saturday versus Susquehannock. High school field hockey has 24 participants for this fall and their first scrimmage is home on Monday, August 18th versus Central York. High school girls volleyball has 34 participants this fall and their scrimmage is home on Tuesday, August 19th versus Boiling Springs. High school cheerleading has 21 participants for the fall season. High school cross country has 22 male and nine female participants this fall and their first contest is an invitational on Friday, August 29th at Falling Springs Elementary School. And then junior high football, who also started today, has 32 participants for the fall season and their first contest is away on August 27th at Southwestern. Middle school field hockey, middle school cross country, and middle school cheer all begin next Monday, August 18th. At this point, middle school field hockey has 14 participants currently cleared to begin practice on the 18th. A few are missing paperwork that haven't been turned in yet, so we're looking at more of 18 to 19 girls on the team. Middle school cross country has 27 males and 17 female participants this fall and their first meet is at Greencastle on Wednesday, August 27th. And middle school cheer has 24 participants this fall and we are going to be sending them to cover three away games this year. So that is a change for them. Usually they just cover home games, but we are going to give them the opportunity to go to three away games. Anybody have any questions on fall sports in regards to teams and participation numbers?
Two, two questions. One, how many female golfers do we have?
So we currently have two. We have two that are in the tryout process currently. They were not there for last week's practices.
Okay, the second thing is, last year, middle school field hockey only had one team. How many, I know you said the number is 14 right now with some kids missing some paperwork. How many do they need to get to have a chance at two teams?
So if we had that 18, like 16 to 18, we would try for two. I know some of our opponents have already emailed out that they will not have enough. So we'd look to play like a modified game even if we did have enough for two teams.
Okay.
Okay.
You're, sorry, over here. Those cross country numbers for girls at the high school, they were what?
So at the high school, we currently have nine female participants. That is up from last year. We do have a few more that have not turned in paperwork even though the first day of practice was today. So we're hoping that by the end of the week, we can get those numbers up a little bit.
What was the middle school number?
So middle school number has 17 that are cleared at this point. They still have a few days to turn paperwork in as well. Okay, all right. Then moving on for fall sports and turf scheduling. At this point, I know that we're looking at some potential changes. All contests and scrimmages that were scheduled to be on the turf were scheduled without conflicts. Games and scrimmages were moved around so that all high school events could take place on the turf. That did mean that we were looking at six days a week because we were unable to stack different games without having lights. Once our lights are installed, we can look at stacking practices which will help alleviate maybe like a JV football game on a Saturday and moving that to a Monday. But I know that we did speak at one point, there was a request from soccer and field hockey about a senior night under the lights, so I did reach out to SU. We do have three dates right now that we looked at for senior nights at SU under the lights and on their turf field. So I will have a contract forthcoming. I'm just waiting to get that from Schiffensburg University. And then another update at the turf field, the old announcer shed that we use for track and field meets, that was completely gutted out and cleaned out. And that has been converted into a concession stand for our sports that are using the turf complex. So right now, field hockey, boys and girls soccer boosters, and then also football boosters can sell different items out of that for the sub-level games. Any questions on scheduling turf or anything like that?
Good job. That sounds like a logistical feat.
Thanks. I do have multiple drafts. I brought them with me if anybody wanted to look at how we got to the non-conflicts, but I do have my drafts with me.
Can I have one, please? Do you have, you giving them to us or you just tell us?
I'm just saying, if anybody wants to look at them, I do need them back because of potential changes with Memorial Park as well. But if you want to look at them, I do have all the different drafts here. Okay. Next up, winter sports. The important dates for winter sports were sent out to all head coaches for the winter teams on August the 5th. And they were also posted on the athletic webpage. Winter sports signups will take place the week of October 6th. High school winter sports begin on Monday, November 17th, and middle school winter sports will begin on Wednesday, November 19th. Anybody have any questions on winter sports at this point? Always a season ahead, Mr. Scott.
Yeah.
I ain't complaining.
Yeah. Okay. And then the last item I have is just kind of a athletic webpage. This does get updated weekly, if not daily. It's a very good resource for our parents and community members. On the athletic webpage, under the school district website, there is a live athletic schedule on Arbiter. And parents are able to sign up for Arbiter updates. So if their son or daughter may be on a sport, they want to follow it, they can add it to their Google Calendar. They can also subscribe for changes so they receive a text message or email notification. Also on the webpage, we have coaches' contact information, important dates such as the start of the season, sign-up dates, paperwork due dates, et cetera. We have booster club pages linked on there, and also the student athlete handbook is on the website. And that's, that's the update for now.
Any questions about what Ms. Fawness just shared or outside of what she shared?
So thank you for the update, but one question. When are we going to have online signups for our athletes? Like no paper uploads, just being able to just go in, out of form?
So we actually did have online, we used family ID from 2019 to 2022 for physical paperwork. And we received, I came in at the end of that, but a lot of complaints about family ID not being the most user-friendly for our parents. Also, we have a little bit of a language barrier with the district as well with people understanding what family ID is asking with uploading paperwork. And then also families struggling even to get Section 6 uploaded to the system. Around us, locally, Waynesboro, Jamesu, Cannon, Greencastle, Northern, and Big Springs still use paper physicals. And then locally, Chambersburg uses family ID. I did look into the cost if we would re-enroll for paperwork and it's $2,400 for a yearly cost. And then it's $595 to set it up again.
So beyond even just the physicals, just to sign students up to participate in that sport, is that different than just the ID? So I think that for one, like if I'm going to sign my daughter up for volleyball, then I would have to, you have to print the paperwork, physically sign it out, or make sure that you have the Adobe downloaded to do that, and then re-save it, and then, you know, submit it back. Like, there has to be an easier way to sign athletes up even beyond just uploading the physical aspect.
So athletes don't sign up online currently. They sign up in person. So we hold signups during lunches for all three seasons. And we also come over to the middle school to sign up students. So it's all done in person. We don't do any of that online. So then we can physically see the student, hand them the packet, hand them any information sheet that's required. And then also in between seasons, when you go from the fall to the winter, we also have to ask the students which paperwork they need. So if they participated in a sport already during the fall season, they don't need the entire packet. They would only need a recertification form. So it's also making sure that students receive the exact paperwork that they need and aren't being handed the wrong paperwork that they're then having filled out and then trying to upload or hand in.
I guess like, is there not a way to do that online that the students, because still the students are grabbing the packets and there's portions that the parents also have to sign in those packets to get those back. I mean, if we're doing literally, like of all things, I think the concussion test should be in person, but literally those are, of all things, those are online. So I feel like there has, should be a way to streamline that everything should have a capability to do it online versus making sure that a sixth grader or a seventh grader or heck, even 11th, 12th grader is like making sure that that paperwork is getting home and parents aren't like, "Hey, where is that paperwork? I know that, did you pick that paperwork up today?" Because the parents also have an obligation to what the students are picking up.
Yeah, the paperwork's also available on the athletic website, so it can be printed out. I mean, some of our families don't have the capability to print out, so that's why we print it in-house. But again, just the process of online, we do find that families struggle with an online process.
Are we finding that parents are struggling to actually, so like with these, with the sports that are getting now underway, that they would have to come to the district to pick up the paperwork, to get transportation to pick them up, to fill them out, to bring them back? I also feel like there's some of that.
So I haven't had any issues so far with parents with paperwork. I mean, everything has been handed out well in advance. We did it in May. We've been making calls to follow up with every family to make sure if a student signed up that they're turning in paperwork. I'm not sure, I mean, we have a pretty NSYNC system right now with paperwork and with students turning it in. We also have parents that will email us paperwork. We'll email them paperwork if needed.
Athletic director, I have a question.
Yeah, Fred.
With the football field and the basketball court, with the whole thing, with athletes, how much input do you have and the coaches have in the design and what we want?
So for the current projects, we have coaches that are assisting currently with like the shot put and discus going out and checking it before they finish.
At the first design, when we were designing all this, what, do you and the coaches have input in what we're designing?
Very minimal.
When you, when you're the athletic director and the sports and the coaches coach, K&amp;W never came to you and asked you?
I was brought into meetings after initial designs.
And are, since that point, have you had any input in what goes on, what changes, what disturbances or anything? Have you had any input in that, any of that?
If I'm looped in, yes. And it's not on our end, it's more on like a K&amp;W or ECI looping me in with different items.
But it's not a constant flow?
Uh-uh.
I missed. Superintendent?
What's the question, Fred?
My question is, the athletic director and his coaches, why didn't K&amp;W, putting them in the loop and knowing what they want?
So K&amp;W designed the bleachers, turf, and field.
That's what I'm asking.
There's not a ton of input needed. You know, we included Ms. Fawness when we needed like seat counts, like how much, you know, what the gate was.
So, who, but I'm saying like where the coaches wanted something, or coaches needed something at a certain location or asking for certain things. That wasn't material to the stadium or to the basketball, present basketball?
So the stadium, we designed the stadium, Fred. Those planes were available. They worked, you know, with the space that we had to work with. We made some different changes later on that moved some shot puts and things at the district's suggestion.
And that was working with the coaches. Once we saw the plans, working with coaches.
So the initial part, when they started out, who determined what we needed?
Okay, so we needed a football field.
Okay.
We built a football field. Those are pretty standard. We needed a track. Those are standard. There's not a lot of input on those, and we built bleachers. You know, if we move things around with the track, I think the coaches had some input on that end. Correct? Am I misremembering that? Where, when we, when we tried to preserve the current football practice field.
The grass field, yes. The coaches had a say with the discus and the shot whenever, before the concrete was laid to make sure that we could run more than one event at the time. So up on like the practice football field area to preserve that field.
But, okay, but I'm talking from this, when we started, when we said we're going to do this, you weren't included, and I understand that we had to do it in a certain amount of, a certain amount of money. But I'm understanding, before K&amp;W or whoever did it started anything, did they come before they threw up anything, before the plan, did they come to you and the coaches and ask you what you wanted?
No.
But, you know, Fred, just, just remember, like, it's a standard football field, it's a standard track. Those, those are what we built. You know, it's the, it's the ancillary moving of, of like where the shot put is. In, in those discussions, coaches were consulted, right? You know, like, we're not going to consult a coach on like how long the football field should be. It's standard. Like, there aren't a lot of questions in that part of the design piece, Fred.
Then if they designed it so much, how did we get that punch list?
So.
They knew what they're doing, if they knew what they're doing and they designed it, why do we have a punch list?
In any project, Fred, you always have a punch list. We're going to have a punch list for the high school. We're going to have a punch list for the middle school. It's things that need to be finished. They're not necessarily like, you know, like, design issues. They're things that we have to make sure are correct, and that's what a punch list is for, is to make sure that we get what we paid for, and that it is to the specs. And a lot of those specs are, you know, through the PIAA and the National Track Association in terms of like width of the track and, and things like that. And if it's not up the, up the standard, that's what the punch list is for.
I understand, I understand, and I'm not about the punch list because it's 40-some things that are wrong. But I'm, I'm just saying, now finally, if you were building a house, and the guy built a house, and you had no input in it. Houses are standard. I can go get a plan. But you had no input. That's what stirred me. Our Athletic Director had no input in anything. All he had to do was call, and she'd look, yeah, we know, something, but not to even include her in that, I find that hard.
But she's not an architect or an engineer.
You don't have to be an architect. If you, you're building a house, do you want to have input in it?
I want someone who builds houses.
But do, would you want input in it?
Fred, there's no input on a football field. Like, the football field is standard.
How come there's so many different football fields around this country? Different types, different width, distance, length. The inner, inner, inner part is right, but the outside of it?
So, so the football field meets PIAA standards. So we designed to what the PIAA says, that's what we got. The, the track was intended to be designed to the PIAA standards. There were some errors when they put the track down. We're holding them accountable to that. They're going to make it right. The, the track is the track. Like, so it's, it's not a unique experience. We're not building a unique football field. They're 100 yards. You know, and, and like, there's not much more design elements for that part of it, to have input on.
So working with the coaches, whenever we saw the plans for the throwing events, as Mr. August said, and we looked at how much of the throwing events would take up the practice field itself, we worked with Coach Faust and Coach Faust and Coach Sasson to make sure that we could get the throwing events before the concrete was laid and the designs were finalized, so we could get that worked out. So outside of, as Mr. August said, the, the turf and the track, like those throwing events, we were able to adjust before they finalized the concrete pores. And even now, we're finalizing the discus cage to make sure that it's up to the standards and what the coaches want.
And you were involved, we, I mean, we sat down with the turf people to look at.
We picked the colors for the lines.
I understand that.
So, I mean, I think, on the things that could have input, you know, the, the style of the, the turf and the colors, I think you, you did have input on those things, correct?
The, the turf and the colors, are you referring to like the long and triple jump? Because I know that's a, an item that wasn't.
I talked, I know, I officiate basketball, and I talk to a lot of Athletic Directors, as you know. And they usually have input in what's being built at the initial point, not even started. I just find it's hard to believe that you, our Athletic Director, had no input in what was going on.
I was brought in on different items that.
But not the whole, all, whole, whole ball of wax. Okay, all right. Thank you. One more thing. We're going down to the park. Are we going to bring in, what do we use for bathroom facilities?
So we have to look at that. Once the contract is approved, we will have to, Tim Drawball and I are going to meet with Mr. Mitchell with Park and Rec to see what we can use for facilities, because those have to be run through the Park and Rec Department for the poolhouse area, since that's under construction.
Are we going to put porta-johns or we going to get them in the big bathrooms for people?
So for the spectators, we still have restrooms there that can be used at Memorial Park. So they have the brick building that they updated last year, and then underneath the grandstand, those are still used. And last year, we didn't bring in any extra restrooms because they had updated the concrete brick building.
The lines outside the building for women was unbelievable. They stayed in there for quite a while, right?
Yeah, that's.
That's what I'm saying. Okay.
So we do have to look at, with Mr. Drawball and then Mr. Mitchell, what we'll do for our opponents.
Okay, thank you.
Poolhouse.
Anything else for Sarah? All right, thank you. Mr. Bybee, transportation.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
A couple of updates for what we've been doing with transportation over the summer, what we're able to accomplish. One of the things I wanted to bring up first was the fuel program that we switched to with WEX. With our first full year of using the WEX program, we were actually able to save around $65,000 with that change for our first full year use compared to what we did the year before and the year before that. With TransAct, that's our new system we were able to switch to. It allowed us the ability to input all of our students and have our routes available and ready to the best of our ability by July 29th, where we were auto-assigned. We had students from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade assigned to the vehicles based on our primary residence, and the drivers for all of our contractors are out running the routes, giving us updated times, information like that to correct as they can give it to us, and we can put it into the system to update in Skyward. We were also able to utilize a field trip software, and I use it for field trip and sports trips. The software allows us an easier flow of information, where before we were doing a lot of it by email traffic or by Excel, something of that nature, and occasionally speaking with three different contractors, we would not miss, but we'd get dangerously close to maybe not having coverage for an event. So this system allows us to centralize all of our trips that give the administrators the ability to see, the athletic department has the ability to see, and the requesters like our teachers that are putting it in. It allows them to know what bus is assigned, what company they're using, and it can give trip estimations and a few things of that nature to streamline our process and make it a little bit smoother for this upcoming year. TransAct also gave us the ability to trial a tablet. Now, this was a question that came up from our committee meetings last year to see what the probability of that was with TransAct and their tablet and the system that we're using. We were able to use it for the month of May, a couple of weeks. We used it on Bus 27 to see what it would give us and the information that it could present to us. And what we found is that it has a, it's called a passive GPS system. It's a seven-second delay, which is actually fairly smooth compared to what you see on other systems. Some of the GPS systems we've seen had a 25 to 30-second delay. So TransAct being able to give us a seven-second delay and see almost in real time where exactly they're traveling to, what direction and times would be beneficial. It also allows for a single sign-on. So if we have sub-drivers that are trying to get onto the vehicle, what they would do is they would have a tablet that they could take, sign into that tablet and choose the route that they're running. So now there wouldn't be a discrepancy between the original driver to what the sub-driver is doing that day. Often when we see subs now, the sub gets on to drive, and then one of the contractors would have to facilitate a person, like a navigator, to ride along with them to help them make that run and do it efficiently. It also allows, it also allows us the ability for scan, like students scan, sign on and sign off of the bus, which is something that we've also talked about. It, what it presents is like a QR code that the student could just, as they're walking on, whether they have the code or they have it on their phone, because it can be electronic. They can scan, get on, it registers in our system that they're riding. Students that don't ride, it'll notify us and tell us that they're like redlined. They're, they're not riding. So it, it helps us to navigate also the students that are effectively riding all the time, and the students that are not getting on, or maybe they're parent transport and we haven't been notified by the parents, or they potentially have moved, or they're driving themselves and we weren't updated, things of that nature. So it does help us with that and isolating those students to be able to be more efficient with our accountability, who's on, who's not, and how we get them to and from. It also, just like our regular GPS systems, it also offers like audible directions. So we can blackout the screen where a driver's not looking at the screen, but it can tell them, you know, take a right on Penn Street. Pretty basic, you know, pretty easy. So it does have those features that we can utilize. With most of those updates, is there any questions about those first? That was kind of quick, sorry.
Are, these are all new? Are these all new systems this year?
Yes, the two systems that we implemented are brand new. We started them, they were approved, and then we put them into motion in January and fully integrated by the beginning of May, which took a lot of input from Troy helping out and some of our administrators and everything too, getting the correct information, students' addresses, all that stuff in there, and putting it in and being able to utilize it the way it needs to. So it does benefit, there is a huge, there was a huge time-saving compared to what we had to do last year with this outdated system that we had.
Thanks.
So, the next, next thing that I have to bring up is the RFP. Currently, the RFP is with our solicitor. I did reach out. I haven't heard anything back yet as far as what information or where they're at. But Mr. Long and I went through a timeline for how we see the event should happen. When presenting the RFP, we would release it in September for roughly three weeks. We could do longer, but three weeks from my understanding, what I found out is the minimum, that we have to actually make it available. All of our dates past that, starting from October 3rd until January align with the board meetings. So the moment that we get this information or sit down with the committee or the board, that information could come available the next board meeting right away, or interpretation review questions, stuff like that.
You guys have any questions?
Sure.
If a, if a bus has students causing trouble on the bus, and the bus has to pull over for a safety reason, what do we do?
So normally, if a bus has to pull over for student behavior, the driver will call into the, their supervisor, let us know. And then, last year, we actually had this happen. And we try to see if the driver can handle the circumstance to begin with, because sometimes just stopping bothers everybody, so they want to get on the road and they tend to calm down. But if that doesn't happen, they contact us, and myself or one of the administrators, if they're, depending on the location of the vehicle, will travel out to that bus to help out.
Any questions on the RFP? Okay. What else you got for us?
That's, that's it.
Any general questions about transportation are? So just broadly, are you, are we in a good spot with, with routes? And, you know, I, I would just caution everyone listening that the first three days of school with transportation are
Right, yeah.
definitely, you know.
This, and it's honestly, it's not something that's necessarily new to anybody that's, you know, on the board or in the school. We, we are in a good spot. I feel like we are communicating back to parents as quickly as we can when we do get the communication, whether, whatever avenue that we receive it from. I know that times may be differ, different from what they're expecting. We're still waiting on drivers to turn in their finalization of their routes, so we can have those times. We do make tweaks. And within those first couple of weeks of school, we always see that. We see an influx of students that are registering late. We see students that are dropping off because they're driving, KOLA students, CCA. So all those things change and manipulate the time that we have, which is more often than not an estimated time generated by our system and best guess of what we can do.
Just one question. And I heard another district talking about how they were doing this. As you said, the first couple of days of school, specifically the first day, every parent takes a picture of their kid at the bus. So I know another local school district was actually doing like their trial runs, and then letting parents know that, like, hey, this bus is going to come by. I don't know, we start next Thursday, so it's Thursday or whatever. They're coming by, and then the kid can go out. They can kind of take those pictures on the first day, even though it's not really the first day. Because I, I'm a parent of a young kid, I.
Well, I mean, I think it probably takes the pressure off of, of slowing the bus down that day.
I was just throwing that out there as a potential idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Not mine, stolen from another district, but.
Wouldn't, I, I don't see why it would be a bad thing, especially with the, like, with our new system and how it did give us the ability to get the contractors the routes that much sooner. They have the time to figure out the routes and their stops and what they're doing. So potentially, that could be something, yeah. I don't see why that would be a problem. Maybe not this year, but, you know, definitely wouldn't be a problem.
I mean, it could almost be a dry run. Have everybody run their routes and people take pictures, but nobody gets on the bus. I, I think the kids might have something to say if they have to get up early before they, they need to, but still, that's a good idea. Any other questions for Mr. Bybee? All right, thank you, sir.
I got, I got one real quick. I guess, do we, a school our size, do you know how many buses we should have? And I guess my question would be, are we short on that number? Or do we have enough buses to accommodate all of our, all of our students?
So with the amount of buses that we have, we are able to accommodate the students. A, a lot of it, though, does turn into new developments. You know, if they're coming along, how many students could potentially be moving into that area? But we don't necessarily want to send a route or, or put a route into that area if no students potentially even move in there. So we have to, transportation, we're kind of delayed a little bit when it comes to those things, because we do have to wait on the input of like circumstances that are happening. So the, the new, like, three-story apartment complex right there at Rutter's, we haven't received anything from there yet. I don't know how many students could possibly get into that location, but that would generate us to manipulate a route or look at an additional bus or something of that nature. It also goes on with parents, schools, bus drivers letting us know who's riding and who's not. Because on paper or in the system, we show 72, which is the full amount that you can actually have on a bus. They might only be hauling 40. And that could be because of athletics. It could be because of student drivers. It could be parent transport. But yet, maybe we're not receiving that information? So if, if we don't necessarily have it, then we can't, we can only manipulate what, you know, what we have at that time. So as of right now, we are good. We do have enough buses. Some of the length of, actually, most of our runs with the times that we're doing and updating, they're comparative to last year. What we did the same way. But those times will adjust based on the information that we receive after school starts. Does that answer your question a little bit more?
Yeah.
So like, what is the maximum commute time, like, to and from school? Like, if there was a magic number of how long we would want one of our students on the bus from Shippensburg to Newburgh, what, what does, what would that number look like?
Well, there, there is no actual state requirement on the amount of time somebody can ride a bus. There's, that's normally left to the board to decide of like what they would feel would be a necessary time, you know, to ride a bus. We don't personally have anything in our policy that designates that time. But with, with adjustments in time, if you're worried about the time and not necessarily the transportation just to the school, then we are looking at adding additional buses, because we would have to take students and shift them around to put them on additional buses and stuff like that, to make sure we're meeting the time requirement rather than just the transportation piece. Is that...
So what is the, what is the max time currently that one of our students would be riding a bus?
I can only go really based off of what we have from last year, because we're still figuring out our times. And I think the mass, max time we had for maybe a couple of our students out, Three Square Hollow, you know, past Newburgh area, was probably about 45 minutes to, 45 to 55, 45 to 55 minutes was the, was the roundabout time that we had.
And you feel like we'll be in that same ballpark this year?
Once we start getting the other information and kind of bringing that in, I feel like we are going to be very close to the same time. If not, and there is, you know, a singular bus that might be a little longer, there are things that we can do about manipulating stops and changes to maybe cut that time down a little bit.
Generally a work in progress to smooth out, right?
Yep.
So if I just found out yesterday, I think my grandson lives in Newburgh, he's going to be on for hour and a half for a ride home, I think.
So a lot of those times, again, they're, they're generated by our system. And they're generated by our system because it's just going off of GPS and it's, it's looking at it saying, this is the best route that we think's possible, or the route that we manipulated based on stops. And then it's grabbing that information and presenting a time. And until we can get all the little kinks out and see who's riding, who's not, parent transport, stuff like that, we won't see a more accurate time, probably until three, four weeks into school, about three weeks.
Is it safe to say parents should, grandparents should take that time with a grain of salt?
Yes, yeah. I mean, you know, continue to look at it and, you know, we do, we do continuously make those adjustments, but as of right now, the stops are in there to give more, like, to solidify more where you, where your student needs to go. And the times are being adjusted as the drivers give us the information and then what we can do with that.
Will those times be updated after the dry runs?
Yeah, so we have been updating them. And something that actually Troy and I are just working on with our systems is making sure that the file we're pulling is formatted in the correct way, so it can be updated into Skywork daily like we need it to.
Other questions?
Yep, follow up on that. So if you were saying it's kind of up to the board, there's not really a policy in place for that. In my opinion, if 30, 30 minutes to 45 minutes should be a max for especially like an elementary age student to be on a bus, should the board maybe look into budgeting for additional transportation? If that's the case, if that would be, like, the boards will have that 30 to 45 minutes?
We would be looking at, I mean, for a single additional bus at the daily rate base rate that we're paying is anywhere, that'd probably be anywhere from $67,000 to $80,000 per vehicle.
Per bus?
Mm-hmm.
How much would one bus change? Everything?
Not everything. One bus, I mean, we could, we could look at it broken down into like geographical sectors. So if we took one bus and pushed it out to Cleversburg or somewhere that, that area, we might manipulate it there. But you're, you might still have backlog on the other side, which you can adjust a little bit of the buses, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't know totally how much the effect is, and it might only affect that singular piece, that, you know, not all of it as a whole.
You said we had saved roughly 60-something thousand from the, the fuel program?
Correct.
So that would kind of offset some of that cost from the additional bus if that would be something we decided to do?
Essentially, yeah.
Just so I understand, if the board were to add additional bus, it would really be to like target a specific area that, that has like long route?
Yes. But at the mo, and at the moment, we don't, we don't really know who is going to, you know, be the longest as far as the routes until we firm that information up and understand who's riding and who's not, where they're coming from.
Any other questions?
This may be a facilities question, but I, I mean, I drove around and looked at all the construction. We're going to have a new drop-off parent loop system. I assume that we, is that, we're hoping that'll be up and ready in a few weeks?
Well, we're going to get that answer in, in just a bit, and I've been told yes.
I'm assuming that there will be like communication out to parents about not doing laps around the bus loop and, or, you know, or, you know, where to come in to drop off at the middle school, where to come in to drop off at the high school, so that that all runs efficiently as possible?
Yeah, and the administrators at each building send out newsletters as well to inform that.
Okay. Going, going, gone? Okay, thank you, Randy.
Yep, thanks.
Informational item, Mr. Long, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Hello, policy friends, I've missed you. So when we updated the 18, or 815.1 policy, which is our generative AI policy, and it was uploaded into Board Docs, something very strange happened, which is that it eliminated our current 815.1, which was our social networking policy, which was not a policy that we had chosen to retire at the, at the policy committee level, but it just kind of bumped it off the system. So I noticed that and I, so we were working with the PSBA to find out, well, hey, how can we get that one back? So in order to get it back, we have to renumber some of our other policies. So the suggestion is, is to move, rename the former 815.1, which is our social networking policy, renumber that one to 816. We already have an 816, which is our live streaming policy, so that one would become 817. And so then that way, every single policy can stay on Board Docs and they can have their own special number. So there's no changes to the actual policies or the content of the policies, we're just changing the numbers. So really, this is just for me to let you know, it's just an informational item so that it can be captured in our board minutes that we changed the numbers. That's it.
Thank you.
That is getting into the weeds, policy right there.
Jason.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Yeah, it's loading.
There it goes.
It's going, okay.
It's got a lot of pictures.
Go to the next slide. Tonight, I'm going to give, give you an update on the site work. The middle school and high school parent drop-off loop, or middle school parent drop-off loop and the high school bus loop extension, the high school STEM lab addition, the music room addition, and the middle school band room addition. On the next slide, the site work, the middle school loop road is all graded. The paving will, the base coat of paving will start tomorrow, and they should have that up to the bright speed poles by the end of the day tomorrow. And we'll get into the bright speed issue in a couple of minutes here. The middle school front parking lot, they started paving that this afternoon. That'll continue to be installed tomorrow, along with the sidewalk and the front entrance concrete as well. In the high school, the back parking lot, that has been paved, the base coat has been put down. The wearing course, which is the final coat, will be installed later this week. Once they're done with the base paving throughout, they'll come back and do the wearing course. They're not leaving, they're, they're going to get it all done and painted by the end of this week. The high school STEM lab addition. The exterior fine grading sidewalks have been installed. They just got a little bit of a, little portion of sidewalk to install at the auditorium entrance there. And the, the exterior aluminum entrances and door frames have been installed. On the next slide, the STEM lab, the casework has been put in, the, as you can see in the photo, the concrete is sealed, that does have a sealed concrete floor as a finished floor. And what you don't see is the furniture has been delivered last week. On the next slide, the consumer science cooking lab, all that casework and countertop has been installed. The appliances showed up today, so they'll start installing those as well. Luxury vinyl flooring has been installed, that's a low maintenance flooring, you don't need to wax it. Next slide, the nursery, family computers, family consumer science lab, that flooring has been installed as well as the casework. The boxes you see there in the photo is all the furniture that needs to be put together. Going on to the high school music room addition, the upper bowl partition wall has been installed. You see it folded up there on the right side. The flooring has since been installed since the last, since this photo has been taken. And they're in the process of finishing the devices above the ceiling, and then they'll drop the ceiling tile. Going on to the middle school band room addition, the upper bowl partition wall has been installed. You see it folded up there on the right side. The flooring has since been installed since the last, since this photo has been taken. And they're in the process of finishing the devices above the ceiling, and then they'll drop the ceiling tile. Going on to the middle school band room addition, the exterior stairs and the ramp were formed, they were poured late last week. The railing has to be field measured, but they will put up temporary railing for the students. They'll make it safe so they don't get splinters or pinch their fingers or anything like that, they'll make it safe. Next slide, inside that band room addition, the interior painting is complete, ceiling grid has been installed, they're in the process of putting in the light fixtures and devices. Casework has been installed, flooring is scheduled to start tomorrow, it's just a one-day activity. And the aluminum entrances are being installed as well. Next slide, the high school secured vestibule is probably the furthest along. I'll get into that a little bit later, but they're focusing on the classrooms to make sure the classroom spaces are complete prior to the first day of school. And the high school secured vestibule, even though it's a, something needs to be completed, there is, there's an, it's currently an entrance that can be used in case something were to fall behind. They are looking to try to have that up and running by the first day of school. They're, they're continuing to, to work on that area. They're working on putting the column covers on today, and the front entrance or the secured storefront is on-site, ready to be installed. To the right there is the snack bar outside the cafeteria. That has since been painted and the casework for that snack bar was installed today. They'll continue on that tomorrow. Going into the schedule overview, the last schedule is updated through July of '25. The additions are running a few days behind as of the end of July. Contractors are working longer days, they're working weekends as well to get these classrooms ready for the start of the school year. As I stated before, the high school secured vestibule has fallen behind, we're still pushing them to get that completed for the first day of school. Once school starts, there will be a punch list. Contractors will be working second shift or after classes are out to fine tune some stuff, clean up some stuff, but the classrooms will be functional for the first day of school. Pay application status through July of '25, we're, almost 72% billed. ECI construction had two invoices, eight and nine. Eight was for their general work, and nine was for a transportation funding grant. Kleinfelter have two invoices out there. Number six, I'm still holding on because they never gave me the proper documentation. I did give Caleb number seven to pay, so as soon as they give me the proper documentation, I'll release number six. Next item, cost issues. Not much has changed since our last meeting. The one in yellow there is the, the bulletin regarding the meter vault revisions, that's been on there for some time. We've got an update on that on another slide here. And then on the agenda tonight is the change order for the middle school paving that I discussed the last meeting. The next slide does show you, it's the same drawing I had up for the last meeting for this change order, number two for ECI for this middle school paving. We went through unit costs based on the contract for that change order. Their initial cost coming in for that change order was close to $32,000. I got them down to about $26,000. Next slide shows your contingency balance. The, that does include the estimate for the meter vault and the change order number two, that's up for approval tonight. So after tonight, as long as everything is approved, roughly $172,000 with contingency remaining. And right now, I don't see anything forecasted for any additional costs.
So just to interrupt you for a second, so that, that's money that's coming back to the district for other uses?
I hope so.
Okay.
Next item, the project challenges. The water meter vault is in production. We do expect that before the end of August. Once that's received, we'll get that scheduled with the school as far, it'll be a day or two of a switch over from the existing meter to the new meter. We'll schedule that around school holidays or long weekends or something like that. So as soon as we know that's on-site, we'll come up with a schedule for the school and get that approved. Next item is the bright speed fiber issue. I'm sure you're aware of the challenges we had on that. If we go to the next slide, it gives a current status. First bullet line there, I just received a proposal right before the meeting. I did send that to Caleb a little while ago. It's right around $7,000 for Bright Speed to run some new lines and set some new utility posts for their service. Little bit of history there, they were out in the middle of July to do a site visit, wasn't really productive, they couldn't give us any answers. At the end of July, they, they finally told the contractors they could install the underground pathways as shown on the drawings, and that they would be out after those pathways were Last week, they confirmed a crew to be on-site this week, but I still have not gotten solid confirmation that they will be here this week. I'm just being told that it's a possibility. The next slide is, it's something I've been putting on all the last couple of presentations. Just shows you on the left, the existing telephone pole... Just shows you on the left, the existing telephone pole posts on the left side and then the right side shows an arrow where they need to be relocated in order for that loop drive to, to function. So we have an option if we can't, our paver will be on site probably through Thursday. If Bright Speed doesn't relocate the service by the end of the day, Thursday or sooner, we may have to stone a path for the middle school bus loop, for the buses to be able to come in. If it's safe enough to run across that stone back on to McAdam, basically where the stone path is now, if you've seen it. And use that temporarily until we can get the, the post relocated so we can finish paving that driveway.
Just, just for clarity, we're going to be able to get kids in it and parents in and out for the first day of school?
Yeah, you're just going to hit some stone and we'll try to use something that will pack down for that first 30, 40 feet.
So about 30, 40 feet of stone, okay.
That's just on the bus loop though, right?
That's on the middle school parent drop off loop.
It's on the parent loop.
Coming off of Everly Drive and then if you're going towards Volvo, on the right side, there is a new entrance going into the high school back towards the stadium. That's going to be stoned for the first 30 or so feet because we have the same condition on that side of the road as well. High school bus loop will be open. It has no, no.
No stone on the bus loop?
No stone on the bus.
Okay.
For the high school. And the front entrance to the middle school, that'll be done.
Looking at that loop in front of the high school, is it going to be big enough to handle the bus traffic that we have coming?
I'm not a designer, Fred.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it is.
Oh, we know what assume does. If not, I mean, the buses will come or Andy, have the buses scheduled in front of the high school and they stop and it's there. It could be down onto Everly Drive, right?
I, I honestly do not know the bus traffic here.
So Mr. Bybee's here. I mean, you've looked at that, Randy? It's going to be, it, it's going to work? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know about that. You got a, are you going on something else?
Yep. Uh, high school stadium. The punch list was issued. ECI is focusing all their crews on the classrooms right now. As soon as, next week, they'll get back on to addressing the punch list for the stadium. Landscape cleanup and seating will occur in the planting season, but they said they'd be back on Wednesday to knock down the, all weeds to get more presentable. The time clocks were installed. The wires are pulled. Just need to be terminated. That's just Midstate Electric who again is on the classroom addition trying to focus on that. Once they get somebody available, they'll get those time clocks terminated. And last item there, we're waiting for KNW's recommendation for the settlement issue by the scoreboard. Kleinfelder provided a recommendation, a couple of different recommendations, and the district is asking for Kleinfeld, or for KNW to provide a recommendation to the district.
Recommendation, who's paying?
Who's paying? I can't answer that right now.
Superintendent, who's paying?
Well, I don't know that I can answer that, Fred. There's some discrepancy on who's responsible. So we'll have to get that all sorted out. I mean, on the agenda tonight is a, a change order that the district is going to, for good faith, pay 50% of that change order and, and move this project forward. You know, it, it, you know, truth, truth be told, it may get, it may get messy. But, but at the end of the day, we're owed a track that works. So, I mean, we have a contract to have a track and that's what we're going to abide by.
What are we paying 50% for? It's on the agenda later on? Okay, I'll deal, I'll deal with that then. Okay, can you explain to me, what is your SiteLogic involvement with the stadium? I know you, it's supposed to be KNW and you're just doing us a favor. I don't want to blame you for something you're not doing, not involved in.
Yeah, we're, we're not directly involved with the stadium. There is one person from SiteLogic that was hired on a part-time basis to.
To bring.
To sort of supervise some of the installations, but he wasn't here every day of the week or anything.
Yeah, that's, I don't blame you for something, another company, but KNW and ECI were the main people.
Um, KNW was the civil engineer, the designer. ECI was the general contractor and Midstate Electric did the electrical work.
Who was in charge?
Who was in charge as a general? Well, depending who was in charge of what.
Stadium.
Design?
Yeah, so from, 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 from beginning to end, from beginning to where we're at now, who, do you know? Do you even know?
The design professional was KNW.
So KNW, if anything's wrong, the weight should fall on them, correct?
If they did anything wrong, yes, but if ECI did anything wrong on an installation issue, it would fall on them.
Well. I just want, I want to know, I'm not paying any money for other people's mistake on my, without complaining. And that's why I feel I, I want a definite answer. Who's responsible? I can't, I'm not holding you responsible. I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Answer who did what?
If it's a design related issue, it's KNW. If it's an installation related issue, it would be ECI.
So we go at the ECI then?
Depending on what you're looking for, yes.
I'm looking for the job to be done right. I know 40.
Well, I understand.
Forty something on a punch list, the wrong. But that's my contention is I, I.
So if I could, a punch list would fall back on the contractor, general contractor.
Okay.
So the punch lists don't, punch list is KNW creating a list of things that they're seeing that need to be addressed.
Okay.
Giving that to ECI to address, just like we're going to give SiteLogic, or SiteLogic's going to get a punch list to, to deal with all these things that are out there in a construction project. So, so that punch list, Fred, falls on ECI. It's not a discrepancy for KNW. And like I, like punch lists happen on every project.
Yeah, but I'm going, who's going to, who's, who requires people to do what they're supposed to do? Because those weeds around that stadium are ridiculous. That's been going on too long. It's a eyesore and embarrassment to get school and the community. Who forces them to do what it's supposed to do in a timely manner?
So, so that's, that's ECI's job to do through a punch list process.
Yeah.
The, the planting season, you can't just, you know, they, they could have planted seeds, they wouldn't have grown over the summer, Fred.
I'm not talking.
Like you have to hit, for, for weeds to come up, weeds are going to come up anytime you disturb earth and you don't plant. So there is a, a timing issue of when you can plant seeds for them to grow. Sounds like they're going to address the eyesore weeds to keep them down in time for us to get to, you know, a planting season.
We pay for, during the spring, the football field, the turf field, the softball field has straw all over it from wind blowing it from down there up on those fields. Now they're going to plant grass again or didn't they, didn't they plant grass the first time?
They, to my knowledge, didn't do any of the landscaping work because they were still getting, you know, we were still doing construction to come through on parts of, of the stadium. We also had the light installations. We had, you know, the scoreboard. So they didn't come in and do piecemeal stuff because we were still adding things to the project. So that window was, was missed to grow things. Okay, so that's what's causing the weeds to come up. They're going to mitigate the weeds when it's time to put all that, you know, we, we have a bunch of bushes or plantings that have to happen along, you know, row road that need to come in yet. We're, we're not going to put in things that are going to die. So, you know, we are, we are beholden to the seasons.
Okay, so, so we didn't, when we played, we didn't put no weeds, grass seed down, we put the straw on the field.
I'm sorry, Fred, I can't hear.
We didn't put any grass seed down, we put the straw.
ECI didn't put any grass seed down.
Okay. Put the straw down then.
Just to keep the erosion control.
Didn't work out too well. Maybe one softball field it did, but that down there. Okay, so ECI, they're, the punch list, we got to wait to, are you going to, are you going to be an enforcer of the punch list?
I will try to help.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Question?
Oh, I, I have a huge one before you go. We're, we're open for business on the 21st, correct?
Yes.
And 18th, we can, we can bring teachers back?
Yes.
Okay, and we're, we're on budget or under budget, correct?
Under.
Under budget, okay. Music to my ears, thank you.
I got a quick question. Did they, is our stadium still under construction?
I would consider it still under construction.
I guess my question is, or I know we've been practicing on it, are we legally allowed to be practicing on it?
Yeah, I wouldn't see why not.
So there's no occupancy permit or anything we got to get?
There's no current safety concerns.
Okay. Just checking.
Question, the band floor supposedly, high school, supposedly they had a pipe they had to tear out. Has the floor been redone in there yet?
So they're still waiting for that product to arrive. That was approved, I forget exactly when that change order was approved. They ordered the luxury vinyl tile for that area and as of last week, it still hadn't arrived. We're sort of going to hang loose here for a couple of days and see if we can still get that in before school starts or, or within the first week of school with potentially putting that band in the auditorium area temporarily so we can get that floor taken care of. If we feel that product's going to take a few more weeks to, to arrive, then we'll have to come back and take everything out of there, redo the flooring on a long break closer to Thanksgiving or whenever the time is allotted for that product to be installed.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I do have another question. You know me. Hey, the, the high school, the basketball, the putting in the hoops, they said they put the ceiling tile in without moving the hoops?
There was no hoops in the project.
So the basketball hoops are an additional project that the board approved.
Yeah.
The, the timing did not match up, that, that, I believe we have to get the ceiling tiles in to be able to get it inspected for occupancy.
Yep.
Okay, there was duck work done, you know, so when we did that, we didn't have the complete duck work, I guess, mapped out when the contractor came in to look at the, the space that they need to install these. So basically we have to pivot, have them come back, look at it again, give us a different plan to, to install those backboards, Fred. So those are actually going to be delayed, you know, for some time.
Done for this year. I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, that, that, when you add these things on in the middle of a project, you know, like it's harder to coordinate them.
I thought we had enough time because that's what he presented. Okay. I just, I just wondered, I didn't want to pay for the towel, then put it up and pay for it.
No, I, I agree with you, but I'm not even sure if they were ordered yet or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, so. All right, let's get started with the planning and action meeting. Call to order, please.
Ms. August, there was still one more thing on the committee of the whole.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. The board's seen it before. It's the items that are needed for the stadium per the approval for lights. Facility committee has looked through those. They're on here just to keep the, keep it on the agenda and to make sure that when we get pricing, we're able to move it right on to action. Okay, so those are items that we are committed to based on, you know, the approval process. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Jim Bard?
Here.
Mr. Mike Carey?
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler?
Here.
Dr. Nathan Goats?
Here.
Dr. Michael Lyman?
Here.
Mr. Kirk Noggle?
Here.
Mr. Fred Scott?
Here.
Mr. Darren Donovan?
Here.
And Steph Everly?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin our deliberations this evening. Let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children of this school community regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, and regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and uploaded to the district's YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students in the Shippensburg area school district. And may we also have a moment of silence for Phyllis Valentine, 1948 graduate of Shippensburg Area Senior High School. Lonnie Coral, 1987 graduate of Shippensburg Area High School. Jerry Lyons, 1962 graduate of Shippensburg Area High School. Sharon Thomas, 1977 graduate of Shippensburg Area High School. Colleen Rotz, graduate of Shippensburg Area High School. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the citizens' comments regarding agenda items. None? Reports and our student representatives are enjoying summer. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Enrollment numbers, which this time of year are always in flux. For the K through three buildings, we have a total of 1,110 students. For SACE, we have 604. For the middle school, we are at 872. And for the high school, we're looking at 1,106. That brings, seeing the grand total, a little over 3,700, which is right, right in line with where we've kind of been. We expect to be a little bit over from where we were, right where we ended from last year. We won't really know that until the third day of school and even better in October. Donation reports. Like to acknowledge the following monetary gifts to the, to the district. Monetary donation was received to support the Veterans Day program at the senior high school from Carl L. Kramer Insurance for a total of $500 towards that. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. August. The consent agenda, item 4A is the. 4A, the approval of minutes which are attached. 4B, the finance reports to include the bill of payments, financial reports, tax reports, and the budget reports for June and July. 4C is the disposal items at SACE. The administration is recommending disposing of the following items at the intermediate school. 4D is the language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, the letters licenses and administration request permission to purchase the language essentials for teachers of reading and spellers, spelling license to train our third and fifth grade ELA teachers. 4E is the approval of the 25, 26 handbooks and those are attached. The yellow highlighted information is new and the red highlighted information is for 4F is the field trip manual. Administration is recommending the approval of the 25, 26 field trip manual. A summary of the change is provided.
Just a quick note about that, those are not necessarily field trips that we're actually taking. Those are places that the board is approving for us to go to. Okay, so it's not that they're necessarily budgeted.
Okay, so it's not that they're necessarily budgeted, but they're, they're just approved.
4G is the grant approval for the Partnership for Better Health for James Byrd. Susan Fink, executive director of the Greyhound Foundation, is seeking retro approval to apply and accept $2,500 in funding from the Partnership for Better Health in Carlisle to cover expenses associated with the PBIS support. 4H is the grant approval for the Partnership for Better Health for the Schipensburg Area Intermediate School for retro approval to apply and accept for $4,950 in funding from the Partnership for Better Health to cover expenses associated with the health and hygiene, which is the second year of the funding. She's also requesting approval for the $6,630 in donated in-kind support from the Burns Health Education Center. 4I is the policies number changes, which Mrs. DeLong had covered in the committee of the whole. 4J is the bus drivers 25-26. Administration is recommending approval for the following drivers. And 4K is the personnel professional and support. There's a number of resignations, leave of absence, leave of absences, new appointments, support staff appointments, rate changing subs, new hires, and we have two of those in the audience tonight.
I'd just like to recognize Matthew Polito, who's here as our assistant director for student services. Thanks for coming tonight, Matt, we appreciate it. And then in the back is Angel Cornell, she's gonna be joining us at the middle school. Very excited to have her join that, that team. Thanks for coming tonight, we appreciate your time tonight.
Is there any member wanting to take any of these items separately?
I like 4F, separate.
I like 4K 26.
I need 4K 27.
Is there a, is there a motion to approve all of 4A through and K excluding 4F, 4K 26, and 4K 27?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey, second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman, all in favor? Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve item 4F, 4K 26, and 4K 27?
Maybe we should take those separately?
Take them separately, okay. Do you want to do a roll call on those? All right, is there a motion to approve item 4F?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Lyman, second by Dr. Goats. Discussion?
We all, we all got those messages from Becky. We, we can't afford the two trips for the, the band requesting?
Okay, so Fred, that's not what this item is. This is just approval of locations that the board deems appropriate for students to go on field trips to. So that is a, you know, that's a separate conversation, you know, that, you know, I'm happy to, to bring you up to speed on, but, but this item is not, not that. There are no costs associated with these trips. These are just straight-up approvals for destinations that kids can go to.
But the places they want to go to is on here, right? So is it, is it approved, or we gotta bring it back? So I'm trying to figure, these are places we're approving for them to go, like Harrisburg and Chambersburg, to the Gregor. We're not approving them to go to either?
You, you can make a motion to add those locations too, okay, as approved places if you would like.
Now or later? I'd like to make a motion that Chambersburg, the band be allowed to go to Chambersburg and Harrisburg to participate in, in the band participation. There's money in, they could possibly win money, and it's their local people, they're dealing around, family and friends, they get to be seen. So I make that motion.
So there is a motion by Mr. Scott to include the Chambersburg and Harrisburg parade to this item 4F of approved trips.
Can we clarify that it's the, the holiday parades, if that makes any difference?
They're already on.
In the verbiage?
They're already on here, aren't they?
Those are the ones that, that I'm seeing that were in question. It's the, the holiday parades for both Chambersburg and Harrisburg.
Asking, are they on there, or do they need to be put, I'm, I'm making a motion to put them on there.
Yes, correct, but just to verify that it's the holiday parades for Chambersburg and, and Harrisburg.
I believe it's just band, I know it's just band competition, they compete against other bands.
It's not a competition, Fred, I believe they're parades.
Parades.
They're paying money? They're paying money, or it's still just a parade? Well, excuse me, I guess technically it is, okay.
So why don't we go ahead and, so there was a motion?
Can we, can I clarify? I don't know if we got a second yet.
So discussion?
Okay. So if we vote yes, we're just saying that the locations for these field trips are approved. We're not necessarily saying that those field trips will occur.
Correct.
It's just keeping a slot open.
Right, I mean, it could be, you know, if they, if that does happen, then we would just have to come back to the board and approve those specific field trips, so this includes them in that list.
These locations were on the approved list last year?
So I don't recall specifically. Administration met with the band director, staff, and came up with a list of parades and competitions and other activities that fit within the increased music transportation budget. If you remember, we moved our budget from $8,000 for music transportation to $20,000 for music transportation. Per those conversations, it was deemed that three parades that were local were, were what we should be doing, one band competition, which not a competitive band, but it is nice to, to get them that experiences, and obviously the five away football games. So there was a meeting with the band director and administration and staff to come up with where the band would be going for holiday parades and, and transportations to fit under that new budget. So, you know, if there's a desire to add these, you know, events, that's fine, you know, it's just gonna be a matter of, you know, how is the transportation taken care of? So there's a financial cost. But this step just adds them to the list, you know, if, if there's, funds can be found to do that, then, then so be it.
What's be the cost? Well, can we come, can you come back later? I know, I'm putting a spark.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I don't have the, you know.
I'm not, I'm not right now.
Yeah.
I, I would like a cost before.
Sure, but, but please understand there were a lot of conversations around this, to, to hammer out what, what was appropriate.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carey?
I'll vote to add them to the list.
He said no?
Yes.
He said yes.
Mr. Kressler?
Yes.
Dr. Goats?
Yes.
Dr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Bard?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Everly?
Yes.
Yes, zero, no.
Is there a motion to approve item 4K 26?
So I, just clarification here, if you don't mind. I think what we were voting on was to add those to
Yes.
the thing which we have, so now we need to vote on the original motion, which was to approve now the amended field trip list.
So, um, item, actually. So is there a motion to approve item 4F of the administration recommends the approval of the 25-26 field trip manual to include the holiday parades of the amended motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Carey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. All in favor? Discussion, I'm sorry.
So at some future point, there will be another vote to determine whether or not those are approved?
Well, depending on how the financing of it is.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, if it's coming out of an unbudgeted item, then, then we would have to come back to the board for approval.
I mean, we approve the budget, but we, we let, like, the professionals decide where they're going, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's a decision for administration to make in consultation with, you know, staff and whatever, right?
Yeah, cur.
We just approve the budget. If we want to increase the budget, then that would be our decision to make, right? We're not deciding where the band should go and where the band shouldn't go.
We just gave them two more options where to go.
I guess we are deciding where they might not go if we don't approve the list, approve the location on the list, but.
It was too expensive, we won't go.
Two more locations, and then it's up to administration to decide whether or not people go there. And if it's gonna cost more than what's in the budget, they have to come back to us to increase that budget.
You know, whether it's boosters giving that money or, or not, right, you know.
Okay. Sorry.
Thanks for the clarification.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 4K 26, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Kressler?
Yes.
Dr. Goats?
Yes.
Dr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Bard?
I'm staying.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Everly?
Yes. Motion to approve item 4K 27?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Goats, second? Second by Mr. Bard. Discussion? Roll call?
Dr. Goats?
Yes.
Dr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Bard?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Kressler?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Staying.
And Mrs. Everly?
Yes. Made it through that. Item, let's move on to 4L, personnel for administration. Administration recommends approval of the following resignation. Jeremy Eastman, director of student services at Schipensburg Area School District effective September 19th, 2025. And administration recommends approval of the following new appointment. And all new hires are dependent upon successful completion of all required paperwork and clearances. Matthew Polito, assistant director of student services at Schipensburg Area School District of an annual salary of $95,000, prorated effective date to be determined, replacing Beverly Bradnick's resignation. Is there a motion to approve item 4L?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kressler. Discussion?
Just real quick, Mr. Eastman, thank you for his time here. When, before this position, principal at Nancy Grayson, prior to that, teacher at Nancy Grayson, I'm not sure the total years he was in the district, but it had been a little bit. But a tremendous human being, great loss for our district.
I would echo that completely.
Any other discussion comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Action agenda, item 5A, approval of the 25-26 bus routes. Administration recommends approval of the attached bus routes for the 25-26 school year. Is there a motion to approve item 5A?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Carey, second?
Fred Scott, second.
Discussion?
So technically, they weren't attached?
No, they, they are attached, but they're locked down, so the public can't see them.
Okay.
Only board members can see them.
Okay.
So we were not able to see them?
Wasn't aware of that till right now. I mean, we, we do keep them down because they have addresses on them and, and things like that, so.
So we did not get the attachments?
I mean, I trust the professionals, but, I mean.
They're there and they have like a little lock, so I don't, that means that we're, you can only see it like if you're logged into Agenda Manager as a user, so I don't know if... I don't want to click on it because then it'll be open to the public, and that's why it's locked, so.
Click on the sign-in thing, then it'll...
I mean, you have to log into your, as opposed to the general public list.
Well, I move to approve the bus routes.
Well, that's good, because there was already a first back in, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5C is the MOU with the Schipensburg Area Education. Administration recommends approval of the 25-26 admission prices for the Schipensburg Area School District athletic events. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
Who to approve?
Motion made by Mr. Bard, second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Goats. Discussion?
When's the last time we raised the prices? Hate to ask the question, but have we ever raised the prices?
I don't believe we've raised them since I've been here, Fred.
It's probably been a long time, not that I'm advocating for raising prices.
Me neither, but I know officials, a football official, five of them, that's cost about $600, $700 a game. And I'm not trying to squeeze people out of money, but could we look at maybe six and three?
I mean.
Seven and three or something?
I mean, we can run that through the athletic department.
Would you please? I'm, I'm not, I'm not advocating for money, but five bucks in 2024, 25 rather, seems like a kind of low.
It is the best ticket in town, Fred.
I mean, I mean, certainly we can discuss, I would maybe recommend that we do that for another season.
Thank you.
Any other discussion comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the MOU with the Schipensburg Area Education Association. Administration recommends approval of the attached MOU with the association to create an interim principal position at Nancy Grayson Elementary School due to Ms. Nicole Avery's current principal maternity leave. Mrs. Sarah Jane Holt, physical education teacher at the intermediate school, assuming the principal responsibilities as the temporary interim principal, and Mrs. Holt's classroom will be taught by a long-term sub-teacher. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey, second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? 5D is the Head Start sponsor-to-sponsor agreement for the 25-26 school year. The school district annually, annually provides lunches to the pre-K in the Schipensburg University Head Start Program located at the Creative Minds located on King Street. The Department of Food and Nutrition requires a signed sponsor-to-sponsor purchase agreement for this service. The university pays $4.35 per student lunch. A 10, 10 cent per student lunch increase over last year and $5.75 per adult, which is a 25 cent increase. Is there a motion to approve item 5D?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Lyman, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5E is the agreement with Skybound Pediatric Therapy for speech services. Administration recommends approval for Skybound Pediatric Therapy to provide speech therapy and consulting services to special education students in the district five days per week. The term of the agreement for the 25-26 school year, the rate is $93 per hour, which will be paid through the student services budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5E?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Carey, second?
Second.
By Mr. Donovan. Discussion? By Mr. Donovan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five F, The School Messenger Contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Administration recommends retroapproval of the attached contract with School Messenger. This is a system we use for our automated calling system and most of our mass calls. The five thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents cost will be paid from the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item five F?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second by.
Second.
Mr. Carey. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five G, Job Descriptions, Item five G A, The District Registrar. Administration recommends approval of the attached job description for the district registrar position. Is there a motion to approve item five G A?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kressler. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five G B, The Business and Operations slash Maintenance Office Assistant. Administration recommends approval of the attached job description for the Business and Operations Maintenance Office Assistant position. Is there a motion to approve item five G B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion?
What, what's this for? Do we have a secretary already?
So Fred, you remember the efficiency audit that the, the board authorized to look at efficiencies? Um, it came back that some roles needed to be better defined and, and, uh, shared out at, at the business office.
Oh, okay.
Between maintenance. So this is the administrative's recommendation to adhere to that, um, efficiency study.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five G C, The Transportation Secretary. Administration recommends approval of the attached job description for the transportation secretary position. Is there a motion to approve item five G C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five H is the High School Cafeteria Freezer. Administration recommends approval for the replacement for the high school cafeteria freezer. Johnny's was the lowest of the three quotes of fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, and this will be paid out of the cafeteria fund. Is there a motion to approve item five H?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kressler. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five I is the FCL Joint Authority Membership. Administration recommends approval, recommends approving a resolution to join the Franklin County Learning Center. The buy-in amount based on a fifteen point seven-two share of ownership, based on a fair market value of the facility of two million dollars. The one-time buy-in amount would be about three hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and would be distributed directly to the member districts. The district would also incur a fifteen point seven-two percent share of the new debt for construction at the facility, which equates to approximately fifty-three thousand to fifty-five thousand dollars annually. The resolution is the Board of the School Directors of Schipensburg Area School District, Cumberland and Franklin County, Pennsylvania, indicating the intent of the school district to join the Franklin County Learning Center Joint School Authority contingent upon execution of the Articles Agreement and Bylaws as amended by the Schipensburg Area School District and the current school district members permitting the joiner of Schipensburg Area School District upon payment of the Schipensburg Area School District's proportional share of the current fair market valuation of the FLC building. Is there a motion to approve item five I?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Goats, second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five J is the Blue Mountain Escavating Facilities Committee recommends the approval to expose the existing CMP. Estimated cost is fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents and will be paid from the construction funds. Is there a motion to approve item five J?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second.
Second.
By Mr. Kressler. Discussion?
What's a CMP?
Um, it took me a while to figure this out. It's corrugated metal pipe.
Okay.
That needs replaced.
Where?
Through the retention pond. Part of the, my understanding is the, oh, at the stadium, sorry. Yeah, so we're, we're dealing with water, water issues here, um, and it's to, to fix that flow of water to the retention pond.
Is that the one right out in front of the high school? Lower end of it?
I think so.
I believe so.
All in favor?
We take roll call, please.
Oh, sure. Roll call, please.
Dr. Goats?
Yes.
Dr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Bard?
I'm staying.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Kressler?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Eberly?
Yes.
Taking money out of the stadium for this one.
Yep. Six one one, motion passes.
Five K is the Change Order Paving Replacement. The Facilities Committee recommends approval of the attached quote for the blacktop removal and replacement at the middle school parking lot. Total for the change order is twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, and we paid out from the construction allowances. Is there a motion to approve item five K?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Donovan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item five M is the Memorial Park Agreement, attached the proposed lease agreement for use of Memorial Park for the twenty-five.
Skip the work.
Sorry. Five L, The Track Settlement Repair. The Administration recommends that the Board approve the release of fifty percent of the amount due to ECI for the attached change order until there is more clarity on both the cause and the fix. Is there a motion to approve item five L?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Dr. Lyman. Discussion?
Just wondering if we can get the superintendent to give the public a quick, um, explanation of what is going on here.
Sure, I, I'll be as quick as I can. So with the new track, um, despite geological testing around prior to the installation, um, the, there was a, there was a mass of organic material, otherwise known as like topsoil underneath. Uh, with the installation of the track, um, we saw some settlement of, of that track, um, by a few inches. Uh, so it falls under this either like act of God, or it falls onto the contractors. And so, um, in talking with our solicitor, uh, his recommendation was to show good faith effort in, in, uh, to, to get the track repaired, to pair, to, to pay for these repairs. There is some, uh, more than some, um, uh, I would say discrepancies on exactly if there was missed uh, work done by the contractor. You know, we're, we're waiting for documentation on that. I will say that the initial, the initial fix that was done wa, did not completely repair the issue. Um, Jason spoke to that in his presentation, that Kleinfeld, Kleinfelder and, uh, KNW are reviewing options for that. So, um, you know, basically, uh, i- if it is found and determined that we are, you know, was it, it was an unforeseen, you know, unforeseen cause, then the district would own the full cause of it. Um, if there was some discrepancies, uh, on things that the contractor should have done, um, then it would fall back on them to fix it. Um, so his recommendation was, uh, to, to be able to move the project forward, to, to have a good faith, uh, you know, payment of some of this change order.
So the track was laid. Um, a settlement was found. They came to repair it the first time. It's settled again. And now we're looking to release fifty percent of the funds.
For the original fix, correct.
I think there's some other spots that settle and also?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Bard.
I think at the south end, towards the greenhouse.
I mean, I can, we can check it out, you know, as of, you know, the last time I was updated on the stadium.
Yeah, there's, there's.
These were the areas that we had problems with.
There's settlement there. But the fact of, why should we pay fifty percent? Why, I could see at the end, but wonder if it's not our fault?
So, so the testing did not reveal this, so that, that's Kleinfelder's job. The contractor is arguing that they can't be responsible for areas that weren't tested, and, and the testing was done in accordance with the procedures that go along with doing this kind of work. Um, so, so they didn't know what they didn't know, even though the testing was done. So their, their, again, their claim is that, you know, this, they're not responsible for all of what's underneath the ground that has not been tested, because you don't test the entire track, you test in sections. So this unfortunately was a section that fell between the testing spots that we believe is causing, um, you know, the settlement of a few inches on the track. So, so the other side of it is, um, there is some contention that the, the packing, you know, that was originally done on the track may have not been done correctly. Um, and, you know, according to our solicitor, uh, it may be something that all parties chip in to fix. Um, you know, so this would be the district making a gesture towards that.
Why are we, why are we always making a gesture or taxing my people, taxing people, payers money? I don't, I don't understand. They, did we hire Kleinfeld to do the testing?
So technically, ECI did the testing at, hired Kleinfeld at our request.
Okay.
Okay, so Kleinfelder does testing for us in a number of different areas. Um, you know, they were brought in to do this geographic, or geological testing.
Is this paid for out of our contend, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Contingency?
Yes.
And so, and we're okay in our.
We are. We'll have approximately, I think, seventy-two thousand dollars left in contingency from the stadium.
I think it's one seventy.
Uh, for the.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just going based on what he said earlier. Is that right?
Isn't that for the full project? That's the whole project.
Okay.
Stadium, because we spent, you know, different things. I, you know, the last number I recall was we would still have seventy thousand dollars of contingency money.
Is there a world where we get this money back?
Uh, we may have to get some lawyers involved, but yes, it's possible. And that, that's the other side of this. If this devolves into a court case, um, we're going to be in court and we're going to be paying lawyers. Um, and at the end of the day, the district may still have to pay the entire thing.
So we pay lawyers or we pay half?
We're, we're paying half as a gesture to move in that direction. Um, you know, if the board rejects it, then, you know, we'll, we'll go into phase, you know, the next phase.
You pay lawyers, but you also don't have a track.
Correct.
Why wouldn't you have, why wouldn't you have a track?
Because they won't finish the work.
They're not going to do the work if they don't have money.
But can you say they're going to do the work satisfactorily because they did it twice and it failed?
So, so that, that would be something that would be determined, um, by lawyers in, in court.
We can miss lawyers anyway.
So, I mean, the, the, that, that's the basic gist of it.
So, sorry, uh, just to clarify then, is the track fixed and we're paying for it?
So, no, that's the kicker on this, is that the, this initial fix did not satisfy the problem. Okay, so there was additional.
We're voting on the, paying for the.
Right, for the official failed, failed fix.
Okay.
Um, which, whether we get, we have to hear back from KNW and Kleinfeld, you know, Kleinfelder put, put together some options. Um, you know, there's some, there's some debate on whether or not, like, it was originally, like, poured correctly. So it may not be a settlement issue, you know, we don't know for sure if it's a settlement issue or not. You know, so they have to do some more, um, analysis of, of the problem.
So they're going to drill the spot where it is.
I, I, so, so Kleinfelder's report came, came in, that was forwarded to KNW to review. Um, you know, I, I don't know that they're going to, I, my recollection of the option was to, to like watch it more, which wasn't super satisfying, um, you know, to see exactly where, if there are other elements of settlement in that area. Like I said, my, my, my recollection of, of the report was, you know, maybe it was not poured correctly. Based on the punch list, Fred, you know, there were some other areas that, that weren't, you know, uh, you know, up to the standard there.
But didn't, didn't Kleinfeld state that if we paid for this, we own it from then on?
I don't remember hearing that, Fred.
One of her emails when she gave out the thing, it said, if you pay for this, you own it.
I, I don't really, yeah, I, I don't doubt you, Fred.
No, I'm not saying you did, but I'm just, I remember that because it stuck out my mind.
What do you mean by poured correctly?
Well, so part of the punch list is, you know, the width of the track is a few, few inches short.
Okay.
It needs to be done, you know, so I, I think part of that thinking is, you know, that there wasn't done, it wasn't, the pour wasn't done correctly.
So the, the blacktop was not thick enough?
No, this is the top layer. My understanding.
So the, the rubberize on the top?
Yes, the rubber, that, that's on the punch list.
But.
We may have to tear up this, you know, this section and re, repave it or re, re-rubberize it. But we don't know next steps until KNW gets back with their recommendation.
I'm not an engineer, but if you got a foundation that's sturdy, there shouldn't be no settlement, period. I don't care if you put water on top of it, it's not going to settle if you got a good foundation. I, I just, I don't know. I just, please take a roll call for this.
Can I add one more thing? And I think Dr. Goats kind of pointed. I think the, my, my fear as we discuss all this is like, we want to make sure we get this right. But I think my, myself, I also want to make sure that we don't stop everything from happening, that we potentially put our track team at another season without track. So that's my biggest concern about any stoppage going forward on this kind of stuff. Because I think that would end up making four seasons. And we got to an issue last year at this time where we ran into something, and then the temperatures dropped, and we weren't able to finish what we wanted to do. So it's.
Correct.
So in other words, to summarize that, then, a, a no vote here would potentially stall the process. Is that accurate?
But it may, it may stop anyway.
Well. I so believe that a no vote could also be seen, like, if we are talking about going to court regardless, it could be seen as a sense of like, we were owning.
Yeah.
A part of this, when all we did was fund the project, like, we hired someone to do the soil testing, we hired someone to lay the concrete, we hired someone to do the rubber, like, all we did was hire people who didn't do it right. And we're using taxpayer money, and it could just be seen as a, like, omission of, we, we own this, and I don't want it to, to look that way by approving and paying for something that we know wasn't done right. Like, that's where I am on that.
But on the, I mean, help me out if I'm missing something, but on the settlement thing, it's not clear if they didn't do something right. I like, if there's, if there's specific standards about how to test when building this kind of facility, and they followed those procedures, and, and it, you know, they did everything according to, like, whatever professional standards exist in producing such a thing, and then something bad happens, like, I don't know, is that the fault of the person who built it? If they did everything they were supposed to and it didn't work out right? Like, I, I don't know. Like, this is the kind of thing that I think gets decided in court, and that just doesn't seem like a good way to go, right? I mean, if we can, if we can reach some sort of compromise, and I think that this is what, that's what this is, is this is an attempt at a compromise of sharing the burden of the problem, moving us forward rather than stalling us out.
I think this was the solicitor's recommendation.
Right, in my talks with, with Dave Jones, you know, like, we, we had talked about, you know, like, that there's ambiguity around, you know, what the actual cause is. And so this is a good faith effort to, to move the process forward.
I would, I would go along with that too, but I just don't trust our things, that, that punch list of forty-something things. Wonder if they don't want to do some other things.
So, so the punch list is completely separate, Fred?
Why? That, that settlement was on the punch list, wasn't it? Yeah?
Every project gets a punch list.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that part. I'm arguing the point that there's more than one issue wrong with that stadium. I'm just asking, if we pay this, or we don't, we do or don't, there's other, something else. I'm just asking, if we pay this, or we don't, we do or don't, there's other, something else.
Right, so, so there's other, to answer your question, Fred, the other items on that punch list are not in contention. They're, they need to be fixed. We're, we're not going to pay for those, we would not authorize, I would not recommend authorizing, that's on them to fix. So the punch list.
They say the rest of the things beside this is on them.
Right, everything on that punch list, the only thing that is, is ambigu, has some ambiguity is this item. The rest is on them to fix and we, we're going to make sure that they do up to standards to what we paid for, okay? Outside of this particular item, because we, you know, there's, there's discrepancies over the, the cost and who should be responsible for.
I guess my problem is they fixed it once and it didn't work, it settled again. If I had somebody come in and put a roof on my house and it leaked, am I going to say, here, I'll, I'll pay you again to come back and do this again?
So, so in that case, it would shift over to the people that made the fix, so it gets a little more complicated. So if, if, and that's why this could get, get messy, is that was the fix wrong? Which then we would go and look at Kleinfelder and K and W, or was the fix right and not executed properly, then that would be ECI.
We can't wait till we know?
And I don't think you're ever going to be able to prove that.
I mean, Fred, we, we can, but to Mr. Kressler's point, do we want to risk another track, losing another track season?
I mean, we got to.
I mean, can they run on it anyways with it settling? I mean.
So, so I think you can run on it, whether it's safe to compete, I would defer, you know, we'd have to get somebody to look at it. You know, like, we don't want athletes, you know.
So again, so we would have a track that we could only practice on and again, not compete because it wasn't done properly. So I feel like they could practice, but then they're going to have to block off one of the lanes, we're going to be no further ahead than we were the last how many years because of a faulty installation.
So, so again, I, I would just throw it out there that it's not been conclusively determined that there wasn't an underlying outside control issue of the contractor, that's what they're saying, okay? So, like, that's what would have to be proven, is that, that was faulty installation, okay? So there is, there is some, there is some indication from our engineers that that might be an issue. Our general contractor is saying, no, we followed the, the prescriptions as per the design. And, you know, so, so again, you know, it, it's really the board's call. You know, the administration is just recommending that we, we move forward so that we're not missing any more track time and we get it done correctly. And, and if it does, you know, we can pay fifty percent and hire our attorney to go in and try to prove it to get that money back. I mean, that's, you know, if we want to go down that road.
I mean, I just, I mean, you, you got the punch list, what, July second, they sent you a tell, that's the thing about paperwork. They haven't done anything.
So Fred, I think as Jason said, that they're working furiously to finish the high school. So, so that, we are using the stadium as we speak. It gets, every time I drive by, there's somebody on it. So we are using the stadium on a daily basis.
Turf, not the turf. The turf.
Right. I mean, I, I don't know if anyone's running around or walking around the turf, you know, the track, but.
So the people doing the school, some people did the track?
Correct. So that's an all hands on deck, get us in school, that's where they've diverted much of their attention. When that's done, they're going to swing back to the punch list. But I've made it clear to ECI that every item on that punch list needs to be up to standard, whether it's an inch or two, I don't care. Like, if we paid for eight inches on the side, then we get eight inches on the side. And that, that's not on us, that's on them to make right.
All right. I'm not happy about it, I'll, I'll support that fact that you said, you, you believed, you talked to them and told them, so I, I would.
I sent them a, an email on, on Friday, I believe, that was strongly worded, that the expectation was that those items would be taken care of and we would pay for what we got, we would get what we paid for.
And if we find out later that it's not our fault, we'll get our, we'll get our money back, or still have to get our money back.
Well, I mean, we'd have to ask for, you know, like, to, to have it re-admitted to us, admitted to us.
Real quick, just clarification, the, the attachment, the total for the change order is twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. And so you're recommending that we give eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars upfront, is that?
Yes.
Okay. If we say no to this, there, there's somebody actively trying to fix this. If we say no to this, does that stop those people from actively trying to fix the problem?
So, again, I mean, I think that becomes a question. So, you know, will, will ECI continue to, uh, continue to spend their own money and resources to fix a problem that they're, that they're not getting paid for? You know, maybe, in fulfillment of a contract, maybe we have to hire a lawyer to have that done.
Sorry, one more thing. In a however many million dollar project, we're talking about eleven thousand dollars and I had another point, but I lost it, anyway. With the hope of, of moving the project forward.
Correct.
Caleb, can you do a roll call, please?
Dr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Bard?
No.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Kressler?
Yes.
Dr. Goats?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Everly?
No.
Five yes, three no.
Item five M, the Memorial Park Agreement attaches the proposed lease agreement for the use of Memorial Park for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Is our motion to approve item five M?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Bard, second.
Second.
And by, um, Mr. Scott, discussion?
I'd just like to throw in a thanks to, uh, the, the park authority for, uh, working with the district on this one and also, you know, recognize the borough's efforts in, in the lights approval process and collaborating with, collaborating with the district to come up with a parking solution and getting those approvals through. So thank you to both those entities.
Mr. Ross, if I could quickly, uh, just to reiterate that, I, I was in, like, well, I've been in every negotiation meeting that we've had with Park and Rec back and forth. And contrary to, like, maybe that popular belief of, like, the animosity or whatever, I don't, I don't, I'm Mr., he's Mr. Mitchell shaking his head. We're okay, like, there's always been, like, a cordial back and forth and, uh, I'd call it open dialogue and whatnot. Of course, everyone knows the backstory, we didn't reach an agreement in the spring, we came back to what we need now and he's welcoming us with open arms, uh, as with, as his board as well, don't forget about them. So thank you to them, and then also, as you said, the borough, uh, I think it was last week was the official approval for lights, is that correct?
Uh, August fifth.
So every, like, everything, you know, with lights and everything is full systems go. Again, you know, shout out to the folks on Borough Council who helped get us across the finish line.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Bard?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Kressler?
Yes.
Dr. Goats?
Yes.
Dr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Everly?
Yes.
The discussion agenda, I'm just going to read the titles, um, feel free to stop me if you have questions or you can wait till the end. Item six A is the curricula, the AP Psychology Design and Discovery in the Crete Tech. Six B, the textbook and manual disposals at SACE. Six C, the request for early graduation. Six D is the true HR proposal, employee handbook. Six E is the school board meeting dates for January through June of two thousand twenty-six. Six F is the mental health counseling between SU and the Shippensburg Area School District. Six G is the vaping prevention program. Six H is the Shippensburg Area School District Teacher Equity Plan. Six I is the job description for the maintenance supervisor. Six J is the PSBA compensation analysis and market assessment proposal. Six K is the municipal online auction. And six L is the stadium fence proposal. Any questions, comments?
Can you give us a quick description of the six G vaping prevention program? Either of you?
Vaping.
Yeah. So, you, there are obviously education programs that come from various agencies. You know, our, our hope is to, uh, provide sessions for those, those individuals who, uh, you know, have issues with vaping and, and general education for students around the dangers, the massive dangers of vaping and, you know, and the long-term consequences of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm aware of surrounding districts that have vape detectors or whatever, to the point where those things are chasing people all over the place all the time. It's a major concern amongst our youth, so, um, I just wanted some background, but thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
I just kind of want to applaud the district in coming up with this mental health consulting agreement. It's a beautiful model, I, I love it that we're collaborating with more of our community partners to benefit kids and students of the university, it's a really cool model.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited about it as well.
Do we have any citizens' comments regarding non-agenda items? All right. Board comments, Mr. Scott?
Let me see, uh, Ms., Mr. Knott, can I, can I ask you, I need to ask you a question, please. Last, we just graduated two-hundred-and-some students.
Would have to check the record.
About somewhere like that. You know, did, did, of that two-hundred-and-some students, how many, do we have any going to graduate with less than seventy percent, do you think?
Are you asking if a student graduated who had less than seventy percent?
Yes.
As a grade?
I just like, not many, do I got?
Can check into that for you?
Would you please, I like, I didn't know. Because I know Dr. Goats asked a while back about the grade point average and everything, and I was like, I would just like to know how we doing on that, that aspect.
Absolutely, I can look into that for you and get you an answer.
Well, thank you very much.
Anything else, sir?
Oh, that's all for you right now. Uh, superintendent, when the list of people hired, the last two people on there, last one, was the music teacher and the swimming teacher. They were said board recom, board recommendation?
On this agenda, Fred?
No, 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 but this one, we, we, budget, on the budget part.
Okay.
We, did we hire a music teacher?
We did.
Did we hire a full-time swimming teacher?
We hired a PE teacher with swimming, uh, that's going to be working in the elementary swimming program.
What about the, from elementary up? I thought when we asked for, I thought when you asked for a swimming instructor, it'd be full-time, that he would work with the kids.
So the pool's not available at the high school, uh, it's already in use? That the purpose was to, to bring back elementary swimming, Fred? And that's what we did. We also had PE needs at the elementary level due to class sizes. That individual will be doing elementary swimming and teaching some PE classes at the elementary level. As that bubble comes through the system, we can reevaluate, you know, where we need to put people and, and, you know, up that swimming, you know, that swimming, uh, time.
I just know, during the summertime, a lot of people in the community was on Facebook, trying to find people to teach their children how to swim. There was nowhere for them to learn, and they were asking, will you teach my child, will you teach my child? I just wondered.
So, I mean, what I would say, Fred, is, you know, like, we would have to pay extra for that person or a different person to do summer swimming lessons. You know, this is a teacher who's going to be teaching the, um, the elementary grades to, to swim up to the pool.
So at, after fifth grade, they, they wouldn't get any more instructions?
I mean, there's PE classes at, at the high school, yes, but we don't have anything at the middle school level. Yeah, you have to understand, we have one pool.
Yeah, I understand.
So, like, there's only so many.
It used to have it, I remember, there was a time we had swimming all the way through, it didn't, that, that, we, that wasn't, it wasn't an issue, but I'm just wondering. Can we look at that, bringing that back?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at that moving forward, Fred.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Carey?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Kressler?
Absolutely. One, uh, athletics, Leo's not here. So, fall sports, like, as, as Ms. Flonis said, like, stuff's all, like, full systems go, with the exception of, like, some middle school sports starting next week. One game of note, uh, of course, the LBJ game is the first home game of the year, I think that's next Friday.
Correct.
It's exciting. The second home game is the Hall of Fame game, and then each game has a theme to it, so, and I don't recall the rest of them off the top of my head, but I know there's a band night, of course, there's homecoming and all that. So that's exciting. I missed this earlier, uh, on the enrollment under the superintendent's report, and you touched on it a bit. Right now, we're looking at kindergarten kids signed up in the district, two-hundred-and-forty-six. Last year was pretty similar to that number. And while I love Shippensburg and hope everyone sends their kids to Shippensburg and gets a great experience here, we're also not seeing, at least not yet, there will be some more coming, but we're not seeing class, grade levels of three-hundred kids. So that is, that is a, it's a positive, I want more kids to be educated by Shippensburg, but three-hundred-plus kids in a grade is, is tough, specifically on teachers with class sizes, so those class sizes that you see are much more manageable. Another thing on there is, or that's not on there, but my other big thing is, uh, the state budget is still not passed. So of course, every local entity, entity who's getting or relying on that money is not getting that money, Shippensburg School District included. So I'm hoping that they get that passed soon. Of course, we had to have ours passed by June thirtieth, it's now August eleventh. We can't be late with ours, but they are late quite often. So hopefully they get that passed soon and hopefully there's something in there about cyber charter reform, I have my fingers crossed. And if you want something to read this week, I can read that inspector general report, it was like eight hundred pages. Don't print it, it's, it'll kill some trees. My last question is, uh, it's more of a personnel question, more filling of positions, or how are we looking? Because our HR department always hits home runs on this, like, everyone else struggles, I feel like, around us to get stuff filled, but we are always looking really good.
So, so I would just give a shout out to our HR department and our principals who have been, uh, definitely working hard, interviewing. We had some late, um, late resignations. We still have a couple, uh, to fill, um, that we're working on, uh, that, that we'll have to maybe use some substitutes in. And also the holds, you know, when we hire someone, their district can hold them, you know, so it can take a while for them to get here. But, but by and large, um, on the professional side, there's some, still some gaps to fill. On the classroom assistant side, I would say we're, we're not as good, you know, on, on filling those.
I have faith. That's it then.
Mr. Bard?
Just one thing, uh, there's a pretty big event coming up here, I think on the twentieth, is that when that is? Uh, I'm, what time?
Seven AM.
Seven in the morning, I know a lot, it's during the day. Weekday, a lot of people are going to be worked, but if you can stop out the lift like Levi at the Seth Grove Stadium, I think everybody would enjoy to see it, even if you just see you, if you just stop out, whether you participate or not. That's all I got.
Thank you. Dr. Goats?
Yeah, a couple of things, sorry, I apologize for this first one, I was just looking back through my notes and realized that I didn't, uh, mention this earlier, so Josh, um, hopefully, maybe you can help us out, but, so in the stadium contract, this gets a little in the weeds here, but item five G IV is, is something about, or five, five G four, I guess, way to say it. Something about needing to make requests to move, uh, the bleachers before the first day of August. It's obviously passed the first day of. It's obviously past the first day of August. I'm assuming that that would meant to be the 15th day of August because that's when the deadline was to have a, a calendar or a, you know, a schedule?
If that's correct, we presumptively went ahead and moved those, so they are moved.
Okay. So, so there's no problem there then, I guess, is what I'm saying?
No problem.
Yeah. I, I meant to bring that up earlier because it just looked like maybe it was a technical, but it, I also just wanted to make sure we were all cool.
Yeah, we're good to go with that.
Okay. Thank you. If I already hit it, but, you know, I was excited also to see in the enrollment report that, you know, 250 kids registered for kindergarten. I, I know that there will be a few more, there always are, but, you know, it was such a relief last year. I mean, it's, it's hard to put it this way, right? Because you're excited if there's a lot of kids to educate, but we have, you know, only so much capacity. And it's, and, and we've been making, you know, a lot of progress in our construction to sort of expand our, our belt a little bit. Elementary schools were next, but that was an urgent, sort of scary issue if we were going to have 300-plus kiddos register for each grade. But we seem to have a bit of a, a reprise and I don't want us to lose focus on what we might need to do at the elementary level in terms of facility upgrades, but it is nice to see that it's not quite the urgent matter that we thought it might have been two years ago. So, anyway, I just wanted to draw attention to that, too. And also, I'm just really excited about this, buying into the partnership of the Franklin County Learning Joint Authority. I mean, this, it's not a new thing. It's been around since, I think, like, the 70s. But we're essentially having some ownership, which will give us some say on their board, I believe, and then will give us permanent spots for educated, you know, permanent placement spots for kids who, who need that facility, which is just a much more, as I understand it, much more sort of sustainable and, and kind of, I don't know, less chaotic way of, of managing some of our special placements. If that's an appropriate characterization. Anyway, I'm excited about that development. Thank you.
Dr. Lyman?
Yeah, just a couple of things. A little bit of a nerdy professor thing here. I like the new enrollment report with all the stats about all of the different types of students. It's quite lovely. I like it that we're tracking all the different varieties of students and those that have needs. That's great. I know we approved the, the student handbooks tonight, and I just, I kind of need a reminder or maybe to pull something off the back burner from previously. We have this wonky grading system at the middle school and the high school, and I can't remember, we had a presentation, I remember, but I don't remember sort of what the conclusion was about that and what our decision was sort of moving forward, whether we were going to go back to the more traditional grading system or, or, I, I just need a reminder.
I'm going to have to do a little research on that and get back to you.
So it was shared with us that it was going to go back to what the consortium and the grading scales based on the career tech of, like, the 90 to 100 was an A, 90 to 89 was a B.
But that's, that's not what's in the handbook.
It is in the handbook.
Is it, is it? Okay. It's not what I read in the handbook, though. But we have, we, we have moved to that now?
Yeah, at the high school. I mean, there's, there's like...
Who knows? Everybody adopted it at the church.
Okay. So we're back to a 90 is an A minus?
I'd, I'd have to look it up, but I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I mean, that, that was a, you know, request of the board, you know, sort of the board, so...
Okay. I must have misread the handbook then, I guess.
Well, it's, it should be in there twice, like, yellowed and red. So red is like the old that we're taking out and the yellow is what we're adding as the new.
Okay. All right. I'll admit to maybe reading it wrong. And I will just say hallelujah.
So I just want to say thank you to the HR department. Again, their hard work and their dedication fulfilling all of the job vacancies. It's definitely been a tall order, making sure that we are fully staffed for the beginning of the school year. So Nicole and her team never let us down, but I just want to thank them for their efforts that they've played. And it plays a critical role in just setting the school year up for a strong and successful school year. And I just want to thank them, Nicole and her team, for all their hard work and all that they have done. Information date savers, August 14th, we have the Facilities Committee, and August 25th, we have the Committee of the Whole Planning and Action, and August 21st, we have the first day of school for students.